Okay, it's 6:30. I bring tonight's meeting of the Dalton Select Board to order. And Jeanette said that she heard from Eric and he's not feeling well, so he may not be here.
Here's.
Do it on. Just do it on.
Yep.
Payroll and AP. Does anyone need an agenda? I remember to print them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is the bridge deck paving using the bridge funds that we?
Yes.
The grant?
Yes.
That we got a couple of years ago?
Yes.
Did we have to get an extension?
No one ever came to us and asked about it, so.
And tax bills are going out.
Tax bills went out already.
So we should start getting tax revenue in.
We've already started getting it.
So that's good.
Yeah. A lot of people are paying early.
Did pretty well. Keeping. Keeping up with everything. And having enough to cover these checks.
Yes. Can I grab old tax levy?
I make a motion that we approve the Graffles tax levy warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, that's a good person.
Yes, please.
We have one intent to excavate. Two intent for timber to cut wood. Public hearing meeting minutes from May 12th.
I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from the May 12th public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Eighteen minutes from the subword meeting on the 12th.
I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from May 12th.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Non-public one, two, three, and four from May 12th.
I make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes, numbers one, two, three, and four from May 12th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have the Upton and Hatfield invoice that came the day of our last meeting. I took a look at it and there was just one item which on April 1st, telephone conference with Eric regarding town issues for half an hour.
Who?
With Eric.
I was gonna say, I didn't.
No, I'm sorry. With Liquid River more regarding, I just shortened it. The other ones I, you know, could review and reconcile and.
Everything is okay, you said.
Right, that's the only one I really, you know, I didn't call, so I was looking to Eric to confirm that he made the call. I think I remember him saying he did.
I don't recall him anyways, yeah.
Okay. So are you okay with the invoice number? It matches I, with the log that I've been keeping.
That's April 1st. Yeah.
Okay. So I think we're all set for processing the payment on that. See regarding the Bean property, we are waiting for the deed to be reported in the, and once we have that information, I'll send that along with the water right language.
Yeah.
To the attorney, so we can update the quitclaim deed.
So that that's done, that hasn't been done.
And then it'll be, that hasn't been done. No, we've got the Mylar from Mr. Bean, but we are waiting for the registration.
So do we have to have another public hearing or not? But no, it's done after that.
No, no, because we already
Okay.
Proof going forward, it's just there are steps to actually finalize the sale.
Right.
And having the, we'll have to bring the quitclaim deed to the board.
Right.
And then the beans will have to sign it.
Yep.
But um, I spent an hour or two today just going back over the water right language because there were it's in three different deeds and pulling out, so it'll be right there in one document for eight. Meanwhile, the planning board approved the merger of the two lots, the half acre that we're selling and the other contingent on the finalization of the sale. Do you have an update on the landfill post closure report, Tom?
Look, I could ask, Jeanette, did they, did they send you any notification about coming back to re-inspect or anything? Right, because she said she was gonna come by the end of May and she hasn't, I haven't heard nothing, so I'm gonna call her to this week to find out where we're at.
Okay. And then the 2024 audit, we went over that last meeting, we need to sign the the management letter, which is the same as what we see every year. It's updated for this year. Do you have that letter?
Yes.
Signature? I make a motion that we sign the management letter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I reference this.
Okay. Yeah, and it's, as I said, and I think I can sign it on behalf as a chair if you want.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. No, that's all right. And it's the same language we've had in the past.
Did you have any comments for the audit, Tom?
No, I've, I uh, I just don't understand the, some of the language that he writes down about the out in front of me, I can't remember that language, but questioning protocol whether it's right. And that's not the language I want, I'm sorry, but.
That's all right.
Other than that, it, it's.
Yeah. I know last meeting I brought up a couple of questions I had and I think they were clarified. I mean, I went through it pretty carefully.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you want me to get clarification.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll just take, I'll go over it again, I'll highlight them and then I can come back and talk to you on it again.
That's fine.
You have an update from the Conservation Commission?
No, but we didn't talk about that in public if we could.
Planning Board, I just gave the update on the Bean property and there was another lot line adjustment that was approved.
Mark and Martha Haskins.
Yes.
On Route 142, the Whitefield Road.
Yes.
And there were no butter comments through email or in person and the board studied the plan and accepted the boundary line adjustment.
Yep. Then Paul, I don't know that there's an update on the host community agreement committee.
No, I mean, we have our next meeting a week from tonight.
Okay.
Uh, we started the, you know, discovery phase, I would say in earnest, reviewing several other host community agreements from other towns, looking at some legal recommendations, collecting everyone's input, targeting for next week to review all of them.
Thank you. See, and we're proceeding with the, the solar panels for the solar grant, correct?
Yes.
I know about a month ago, I met with the, the team, the funding team.
Yep.
But I think you've had follow-up since then.
Yes, I followed up with them. There's a lot of different requirements, pre-construction requirements, reporting requirements. It's gonna be probably two or three days work according to the solar, Barrington Solar. So I had a status update with Melissa from Clean Energy, New Hampshire and Ted from Barrington Solar. So we're all on the same page and moving forward. The document he sent me showed that they weren't doing the project until September, so I'm gonna reach out to him and clarify on that because I thought it was gonna be sooner.
Because when I met with him, had that status meeting, we were talking about June.
When you met with Ted?
No, it wasn't the, that, with um, Melissa and the.
Melissa and Department of Energy.
Yes.
Yeah, that's originally, it was gonna be summer.
Yeah.
But he put September on the document.
Okay.
So, so I'll find out about that.
And we are definitely being covered with a grant on that, yes?
Yeah.
Right.
Because it'd be nice to have it earlier because most of the power generated is in the summertime.
Yep. Yeah, Paige Ralph with Department of Energy has assured us the money is there, it's sitting in an account, waiting for the work to happen.
Good.
And I asked the same question when I met with that team.
Okay.
I gave you a printout of that email too that said that you asked for that, I think I gave it to her.
Yeah, I don't recall it.
Four to six weeks ago.
Yeah.
You were looking for an attachment to it, but there was no attachment, it just said it in the body of the email.
And I know Ron's working on the hazard mitigation plan.
Yeah, we all are.
Yep, you and, you and Adam and Paul's on that committee and I missed the last meeting.
It was pretty quick, we just went over a bunch of other possible disasters that could happen and how we're addressing those, what we did since the last hazard mitigation plan was done and where we are now.
Okay. And I'm sure I'll catch up for the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Do we have any updates on the FEMA funding and the growth construction and the mitigation work, or should we come back to that later?
Uh, so Blakesley, Blakesley, Harriman and Union should be in their final phase of review. Uh, this is where every different department with FEMA reviews it and then it goes back to the state and then it comes back to us. So I haven't, did not have a meeting with them last week, I have a meeting with them this week. Smith Road, waiting for the new estimate from the engineer for the actual construction part of Smith Road so that they can include that in the original grant. That way we don't have to go through the painstaking process of another project.
Okay.
They're waiting to get revised schedule request from the contractor, we're waiting for EverSource to move a pole. Originally it was move lines because they were in the way and now it's no, now the pole is in the way. So we've, I met with the engineer from EverSource last week on site and we took some pictures and he marked it out, finished the engineering and sent it in for scheduling from EverSource, so I just need to call them and find out when they're going to schedule it and hopefully it's sooner rather than later. I'm just gonna inundate them with calls, which is what I was told to do from the engineer.
So they were supposed to get that taken care of.
Well, they moved, the lines were moved.
Okay.
Which was the original request, they couldn't get the machines in because the line was low.
Ah, but the post pole, but that didn't come up in the original discussion of the construction plan.
It did not.
So it's not their fault then, well, it's what it is.
Yeah, it's not EverSource's fault.
Yeah, but they just don't respond very tightly.
No.
And didn't we already have an estimate for construction or is this, but needs to be revised?
The estimate for construction for engineering.
Oh, for engineering, okay.
For the engineering services for the construction phase.
Okay.
Yes.
The engineering that is added on to the construction, okay.
Yeah, yes, because they basically are going to oversee the project and manage it from the engineer's
Right.
viewpoint, they'll be there daily looking, watching, measuring, making sure everything is done, so.
Which is a good thing because they have that expertise.
Yes.
You really need that.
That's what they do.
Okay.
And then the mitigation work hasn't started yet. I talked to Adam, he said he was trying to get other roads done since they've been I don't wanna say ignored, but since they've not gotten the attention that they should have gotten last year, you know, with a new top coat and such, so he's trying to get that done. I did let him know that we need to get started on the mitigation because we have a schedule we have to keep and get it done, so I don't think he'll be here tonight, his mom passed away last week, so.
Sorry.
Yeah, so if we need to, he said we can call.
Okay. And then cemetery mowing.
Yes?
Yes, I thought you had an update, Mike.
As of today, we have all the cemeteries taken care of and the all of our experts like the Fall Field, the old dump and transfer station have all been hit today, so we're actually up to date to this point. Now, the biggest thing is I have people helping me that I believe need to be compensated because it's, it's a, a team effort. Now, that's the big thing that I have for you people to make that decision and be able to do that.
So I think I've heard that Aiden and Brian are helping out, right?
They've been right at, right by my side, taking it, without them, it, you know, we'd be in trouble.
It's not a one-person job.
Well, and especially depending on weather, if you have one day, it's a lot of mowing and trimming and everything for one person.
Right, we've been beat up quite a bit because everybody's hollering and screaming because we're raining, we can't. You can only do what you can do and they're hollering because the grass is too high and I said, listen, we're getting it just as fast we can get it, but we're out there, it's just a matter of when it's pouring, you can't, you can't, you can't do nothing and I understand it being upset. We had them all mowed before Memorial Day there.
Right, we had that.
Had it all.
We did make everything. We represent the town extremely well.
Yep.
Before Memorial Day.
But then we fought with another week of it, with the rain and, and then everybody's screaming and hollering because it takes its time.
But we've been, we've, we've been working pretty much every day as long, like weekends were here. We did a lot yesterday just to
Mm-hmm.
People, people were screaming and, you know, with the weather and everything, so we went down and did.
We do when we can.
Yeah, yeah.
But like I say, these gentlemen have been at my side and I would they, I believe they need to be taken care of financially for the town, for what they're, what they've been doing.
Well, I think, you know, when we did this, we knew this year would be expensive because of buying the equipment, but that we'd have to staff it. I think we probably need to have a non-public session to cover hiring of people, so just go through things and then we'll move into on public and we can come back and have a decision.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
So, but
Yes.
Just a big suggestion, you might be able to also in the short term, just do 1099 employees, so you don't have to necessarily hire, which will allow the town to pay for individuals to help out at times.
Yeah, so would, like a 1099, is that? Yeah. There might be advantages in terms of insurance for them being an employee rather than a consultant.
That is definitely true.
Yeah.
So I, I wouldn't wanna go the 1099 route because they don't have an LLC or a company without.
And doing payroll paperwork is literally 10 minutes. So.
And like they are already employees to the town for the fire department.
Right.
Yeah.
And I'm just thinking of the liability part of it.
Job, I'm just saying, it's.
Yeah, no, no, it is, you know, a good thing to think about.
There was only one more thing I was gonna ask the town. Uh, with the mediation going on and everything, a lot of the vehicles, come, town vehicles are being used to do multiple stuff. I would like to ask the you people, the Slickwood, if it's possible for me to use my own personal vehicle just to move the equipment from town barn to the job and back when there is not a vehicle that I can use that accessible with the town's vehicles.
And you've got a.
And I have it in all the insurance and everything that I can give you the, all my policies to be able to cut, show that I, I'm a hundred percent covered.
And you obviously have a trailer hitch on your truck and everything.
I don't see a problem with that.
I know.
Speed things up. I think we should, maybe thirty dollars a week for fuel to or whatever.
Or the, the mileage rate that IRS states. Yeah, I think, I think you're right, we should compensate for mileage and.
Why would I use my own fuel for that? Could be on here, there and everywhere, back and forth, that's up.
Well, I think if we're reimbursing for mileage is probably also, it's like an employee going on to training or something and getting mileage reimbursement and I think it shows her on town business if something happens, then we could contact Primex.
It would do, it would help a lot because of.
Right, because if the other trucks are busy, then you can't.
Truck, we have to stop in the middle while we load everything up and go take the truck back.
Because that, to me, that's first priority is what's going on with mediation and whatever Adam needs first. I feel we're second, but like if I was able to use, I'd be glad to, not a problem, we'll show the insurance. This way here, we can get two birds going at, with, at one time. Okay?
I make a motion that we approve like using his own truck when town trucks aren't available and reimbursing him for
Second.
for mileage. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have other updates?
Yeah, we received this letter regarding the water testing, groundwater data. I know that Horizon's engineering did the groundwater testing for us previously and I sent an email over to her, she sent me an email asking me to give her a call and I didn't get a chance to today, but I will. I'm not sure if this is something separate than what they were doing with the other landfill items, so I'm gonna talk to her and find out because we're required to do the groundwater testing. Items, so I'm gonna talk to her and find out because we're required to do the groundwater testing.
And I thought we had been doing it.
Yeah, so do I. So did I. I know my first year here, I I remember it was done. I remember Tamela was handling it, so. I'll reach out to her and find out. I don't recall whether or not we had to pay extra for that or not. I know there was some extra. Work that they did for us, but I don't recall what it was for, so. Um, I just wanted to let you know we received the letter and.
That the testing is due.
That the testing is due and that we're required to do that in order to keep the.
Now, it was testing from from who?
This is testing for um groundwater from the old landfill.
Yeah, and and that's that's through the.
And I thought that I before Horizon's engineering was doing it, the same people who go and do the. On-site survey or.
Yeah, that's what we were we was gonna be talking about that when she came up. But you can call her if you want and I'll call her too just to find out when she's coming because I said I want to meet her. They had to go over that stuff.
But we also want to make sure they're doing the groundwater testing.
Right, um, the state came in and did the town clerk audit, so I have a copy of that report. Her findings were good. We're in compliance. Uh, last year we had a slight issue with the. The um. The payments being made to the state for what we owe them. And um. And so this year we're in compliance because we asked for um. A modification to that schedule.
To the ACH transfers.
Thank you, yes, I couldn't think of what it was.
So just in summary, under additional con comments, it was a pleasure meeting Jeanette. The office is well organized and appears to run efficiently. Records requested of the agent were easy to follow during the reconciliation of inventory and the two-month sampling of ACH transfer records. No discrepancies were found resulting in a perfect audit. So conclusion, the agent is in compliance with the applicable statutes, rules and procedures. The physical setup of the agent's office and procedures in place provide adequate security for the revenue and inventories entrusted to the agent. At the conclusion of the audit, all inventory items entrusted to the agent were accounted for. So good, good job. Thank you.
I did want to inquire about the town. Doing um boats. When I spoke with her, she said that we could do it. There's nothing preventing us from doing it. There's some additional training that would be required. But it would bring in some additional revenue to the town because right now all boats get registered in Whitefield.
Oh, so they get registered, just not in Dalton. And then we'd have to have a process of um notifying people. And is it just motorboats that have to be registered?
I think it's. I don't know, I haven't taken. I think any, I think it's any, is it any boat that has a motor?
Motorized, I was gonna say, I don't think.
It's just the ones with the motor.
Even a trolling motor.
So I was thinking about doing that. I just need to find out what the additional training is and figure out if I could do it remotely or if it's something I need to go to Concord for. But it's additional revenue for the town, so. Right now, we do boat trailers, but people come here and do their boat trailer and then they have to go to Whitefield to do their boat, so it's kinda. Uh, yeah, they're like, why don't we do boats? I'm like. We just don't. I don't know. We didn't before. When I came here and it's just something that we haven't done, so I'll check into that.
Do you need the authority of the select board to move forward?
I don't think so.
Because it's a town clerk function, so it's outside the select board.
Yep, if I do, I'll let you know.
Another update, we got a update from Department of Transportation about what they're planning on. Doing for road maintenance. And they have um three miles between Dalton and Lancaster on one thirty-five. So from a. P slash J at French Road in Dalton Northerly to Mount Orne Road in Lancaster, they're doing a three-fourth inch FW paver shim. So full with paver shim overlay, so a little bit of our road, state roads that are in Dalton will be done. I didn't see any other of the roads that were in Dalton. Okay, any other updates?
I do have non-publics though.
Okay, and we have non-public to talk about the.
I got one that you asked me to do on the uh transfer station.
Okay, good.
And uh I went uh and figured it all out. And get the prices on what the cost I'd cost and measured with Adam. And uh. We figured on. Going with the building and coming out twenty-four feet with the concrete. Taking the wheels off and putting the box trailer up against the building. And the reason being for that is to lower it enough so that you can get enough pitch. You know, to let the snow and ice and even with that said, it's not gonna be, I think it's gonna be roughly between a three to. Maybe you might be able to get a four pitch, but I doubt it. And uh so that what's gonna happen there is gonna be um. With the snow coming off the old building onto that, that's gonna be a catch off of snow. It's gonna be a good snow load. So the. Overhang of the old building would have to be cut back so that you can rest your rafters. And then shoot down to the end and of course you'll put a transfer a piece of metal so that. But it's a that was.
And you do a metal roof? So that should help with it sliding off, right?
Correct, and uh so this I got a little bit of a sketch here to let you kind of see what I was talking about. And that's the building right there. And then down the center, there has to be a carrier. Uh, because we're gonna split it with two different two-by-tens. We're gonna split it there because I mean to buy a twenty-four footer is hard to get and it's gonna it will be quite a bit more money. So. Uh, that carrier down the middle will be down beside the box trailer and uh.
So help me understand carrier, is that just support beams or is it a whole wall?
So it's it's support beams. There'll be six-by-sixes going all the way across with support beams underneath to carry the snow load. And then uh then it was figured so that the uh far end and the side will be all one battened. So that they can drive in from this side. There'll be sixteen feet of space for them to go in with a forklift.
Drive in from the side that's currently open?
Yeah, yeah, and that'll be uh and we figured on a a six-inch pad. Uh, with uh fiber in it to make it strong enough to carry the weight of the equipment going in there.
And the height will be high enough for the forklift and everything to.
Yeah, and I talked to Kyle about it and uh he says with the lower side, but he does. He doubles up before he goes in there, so he could still use the lower section because. You're already at eight feet and when you start going up, you know, so. We're gonna be pushing, we're gonna try to push for nine feet on the small end. But as you go, as you go over to the box trailer, it will uh because it's box trailer, I remember it was nine feet, six inches high. So it would be roughly about ten feet high there. Then then, yeah, roughly ten feet.
On the high end?
On the high end. And if uh. The thing about it is, the fire is, I mean, uh you get enough snow and you're gonna have to get up there and shovel it, you know, I'm.
Because the the pitch won't, even with the metal, it won't.
Exactly. The only other way out of this is is to go to the top of the old building. So we can raise the whole thing, but the cost is gonna be suspense substantially more. Right now, right now, the cost uh at uh. We're at nineteen thousand one hundred forty-two dollars and sixty-three cents with the labor.
Is that with the contractor doing it? And who's that?
That's me and actually I and I and then I was gonna mention is I'm gonna have to step back because I know that you gotta get. Put it out for bids, so that puts me out of this until it's done, you know.
Yeah, so I mean, we don't do a full-blown bid process, but we would get put it out for estimates. And I would have to check because it might be a conflict of interest for you to do it.
Why would that be?
Because you are a select board member and you're part of making the decision of the money or it might be. You might have to recu- recuse yourself. I just want to verify that.
Plus, the the uh cost of this goes down because Adam is gonna be helping with the concrete pad of it. And he's got the excavator, you know, to uh do the groundwork where, you know. Get your bids and you'll find out.
Yeah, but I think we need to go through that exercise.
And like I said, if you do that, then I'm gonna step away. I got the insurance and everything. And that that cost not only pertains to that, it pertains to a twelve-by-sixteen lean-to over by the. Uh, construction box for the uh for the mattresses. And Adam has uh got telephone poles to put in the ground, he said there. And I added uh. I added uh some six-by-sixes to go across to carry the ra- the rafters. He said he's got some old metals there. But I don't know if you want to do that. You want to make, keep it looking nice with the with the new, but that's entirely up to.
So when is this work supposed to happen?
Whenever the the board.
Because if I'm just trying to figure out how Adam's gonna do that with the mitigation, with all the mitigation work that has to happen, that's all.
Yeah, and like would there be a little bit of ramp going up to the concrete if it's gonna be a six-inch?
No, we we talked about that. We're gonna have to ramp it so that he can get up in there. And I'm thinking more so, you know, you can, we can bring the concrete, a little bit of a slant, but. You want to finish it with gravel because you're just gonna break the edges all up.
So is this detail sufficient to go out and ask for proposals?
What you have to do is put it in that that you want a. Twenty uh forty uh twenty-four by forty-two lean-to addition. And room enough to drive a forklift in with a and also with a uh twelve-by-sixteen lean-to for. The uh mattresses.
I mean, I think it really depends on who you're who you're asking. I mean, if you're asking a. Bigger contractor, they're gonna look at this and go, well, I don't know. What's the material I'm supposed to use? What's this? What's that? You know what I mean?
Well, they'll come up with their own materials. I mean, if they know anything at all. Because all that, all that's designed to carry like the rafters are two-by-tens with uh hemlock uh timbers.
That will never fall apart.
I was always told I overbuild, but I don't want something falling.
I mean, we could try. I mean, there's we have people who locally do work.
You do what you need to do. Just tell them the size and that.
Can I, can I keep this or you want it back or?
I want that back.
I'll make a copy of it?
I mean, so I I think we should. Put it out for proposals.
Oh, absolutely. I wouldn't have it any other way because that would be wrong on my part. You know.
So I make a motion that we put the project out for um. A request for proposals and then we can as a board look at it and move forward, but that based on the the rough design. So I made the motion.
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
Yeah, I mean, I might have to come up with some type of narrative um. You know, Tom, I might need some input from you as far as. What type of material we're talking about, because obviously if. You're talking rough-stone hemlock and someone else is talking pine, it's gonna be a difference in price, so we just want to make sure that we're.
If they're doing pine, send them on their way because pine is strong enough.
So. Yeah, okay, okay. And I think. Report, do you have a copy of our report, our town report in your folder? I took mine out because. My folder was too big. So your nineteen price includes the lean-to over by the mattresses? You said that. We have just over seventeen in the um. Transfer station capital reserve fund.
Okay, that's good.
Okay.
Other updates? Before we go into non-public, any public comments?
Could you clarify why you're going into non-public for the conservation committee?
Yes, we're going into non-public for personnel issues.
Oh, she said for the conservation committee.
For the conservation commission committee?
I just wanted to uh. Discuss my options, I guess. I don't know what else to say. I don't know if it can be spoken yet, so there's nothing, nothing about anybody.
But there needs to be a reason why.
Because if you couldn't update it from the conservation commission, that should be in public.
That we'll scratch that for now then, because I don't know what to say about it, so. We won't have no discussion on it.
Okay. So we're going in to discuss. Highway Department Personnel. And we'll come back. We also, I would like, we could announce it when we come back, but we have hired one full-time permanent employee. Jeff Shepherd. He started, I know he's on payroll.
June second.
June second. But we want to talk about the the mowing and other positions. Um, we probably want an update on welfare. And on deeding.
Yep, I have deeding, I have legal, I have welfare. And I know we have personnel.
And so we'll come back into public session for just updates, I think. A decision on the the mowing and. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, so I make a motion that we go into non-public for those issues as I just listed.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
We'll be pausing the meeting to go into non-public. We'll reconvene when we go back into public session.
All in favor? Aye.
We adjourned?
Yes, we are adjourning.